Hello, Mr. Brett Ladd, who is running for the Board of Education. I'm Trenton Adams. Welcome to the CCRP candidate interviews and thank you for taking the time out of your campaign to participate in this interview process. We've extended this invitation to all candidates in this race and have found that it has been an asset that aids the voters in making their decision. The video will appear on the Cherokee County GOP website and every effort will be taken to maintain it exclusively on that site. The interview will be shown in its entirety. For the interview, we will ask you around thirty questions but can offer no prompting. There are no right or wrong answers, only your answers. We ask each candidate the same questions. If this is all right with you, I'll have everyone introduce themselves and then I'll ask Mr. Jack Saber to begin the questions.
Well, it's all right with me. I'm sure it's pretty boring at this point.
Yeah. Jack Saber?
Brett, thanks for being with us here in Abrams.
Brett, are you currently a member of the Cherokee County Republican Party?
Yes.
How does your political affiliation impact the children of Cherokee County? And how will you, within the Board of Education, work within the Board of Education to make the system more nonpartisan and less divided?
That's a very interesting question. Can you repeat the first part?
Sure. With, how does your political affiliation impact the children of Cherokee County?
Stop right there.
Sure.
That's very interesting because my political affiliation is as a Republican. If I were to run as a Democrat, I'm pretty sure that I would not have any chance of ever serving on the Board of Education. But I also, there's signing up as a Republican and then there's actually being a Republican. So my affiliation is actually being a Republican, building over, since 1994, relationships, contacts, communications experience with people who have been, who are, or who will be, the state legislators, the state leaders. Pick up, pick up the, my cellphone and I have constitutional officers like the Attorney General or the Speaker on my cellphone to say, hey, ask a question if something comes up. So the political affiliation, Democrat or Republican, I think that's sort of simple. But I think that the part of actually being a Republican, walking the walk and talking the talk, and being able to communicate with people from one extreme to the other is an advantage that I bring to the children of Cherokee County that I don't think anybody else running for any position on school board brings. The second part, can you repeat that?
How will you work within the Board of Education to make the system more nonpartisan and less divided?
Well, let's think of why the Board of Education is divided. We all, we supposedly have all Republicans on the Board of Education. We don't run against Democrats right now in Cherokee County. So what we have is a divisive Republican primary, but no make-up or uniting period in order to unite against a common adversary. Without that period that we get in a, like a presidential election, we don't get the chance to kiss and make up. So the, the problems and the divisiveness continues. I think that to say it's a Republican problem is perhaps mistaken. I think it's a political problem because we don't have enough of a, we don't have a common enemy of Democrats and we also don't have a, an opportunity to unite. So then we'll have the continuing issues that divided going into a primary continue I think the way to address that then is to understand that it is up to the individual to say, hey, let bygones be bygones. It's water under the bridge. What can we do now to move forward? It is apparent that some members of the Board, as individuals, are ready, willing, and able to do that, at least that's my opinion, and others have not been able to or have not chosen to. So I think that without regard to, without regard to politics or issues, it takes a willingness of the individual to listen and communicate and then say, all right, I appreciate your position, that's interesting, what about this, or this is what I think. And just because there's somebody on the other side of an issue doesn't mean you have to give up the other side of, your side of the issue. What it may mean is that if you value your message, you will value the way you deliver your message.
What are the duties and responsibilities of a school board member?
Oh lordy, they're set by statute, so it's kind of boring and mundane. Whether it is to select a superintendent and then to evaluate and set the budget and set the millage rate and things like that, those statutory things are pretty boring. The moral and ethical obligation as a school board member, I think, is a higher calling where whether the law says you shall do A, B, and C with respect to budgeting, that doesn't mean we can't do D, E, and F because it's the right thing to do. We don't have to do the bare minimum that the law requires. We ought to do what is right. With respect to considering the issues for the children, it is easy to say, I support the kids, but it's hard to throw 200 percent more money at that issue than you might otherwise be allowed to. So you have to be able to balance the competing interests there. I think it's important to say, like, for character education, a lot of people value character education in our schools and we found a way to abandon it. What goes into a young child today and the values and the character that becomes the freshman or sophomore or junior in high school, we just can't ignore that. But when somebody says, hey, this is our curriculum, I think we should say, that's not what we believe in Cherokee County. What we believe in Cherokee County is this, and that's what we should teach in Cherokee County. So I believe that the ethical and moral obligation of a school board member is greater than just the legal one.
Describe the process of raising property taxes in Cherokee County.
I disagree with the premise because, first of all, we shouldn't raise property taxes in Cherokee County. So there won't be a process. Somebody else can try. I think our millage rate is high enough and it's not going to get any higher. So the process, if I had to describe the process for raising the milage, the property tax rate in Cherokee County as far as a school board would be, is that would be unsuccessful.
What is the maximum millage rate that can be charged?
I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head. I know that we are not quite there yet.
What are your thoughts on building new schools versus retrofitting old schools?
Sometimes it's appropriate and sometimes it's not appropriate. For example, with our recent ESPOST, we made commitments to use money for new schools. The quandary became, okay, do we continue to build those schools or do we abandon the purpose for which the ESPOST was voted into existence? There's arguments both ways, but there's no requirement that you use capital expenditures that exceed the ESPOST. So if the money were not able to be used successfully for all the new schools that were promised because ESPOST didn't achieve enough funds, then I think there's an obligation to change things or perhaps return the money to the taxpayer. Retrofitting schools is sometimes very practical. Sometimes it's just not practical. We can see the difficulty that's going on with the old school on Main Street in Woodstock. A retrofit of that school would probably be very unpractical. A retrofit of Dean Rusk Middle School for future purposes may be, and probably is, practical. So I can't say it's an all or nothing, one way or the other. I think it's a case-by-case basis.
How do you feel about zero-based budgeting?
I think it's a good place to start. It's not required by law, but I think it's something that school boards should put into practice or consider putting into practice. The transition is often tough. But it is one of those questions that our future superintendent should be inquired about.
How do you feel about teachers keeping A in class?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
How do you feel about teachers keeping A in class?
Well, they can't. And right now, if a teacher were to do that, it would be a personal unwise decision even though one version or one reading of the Constitution would say it's appropriate. Like any or many issues with liberty, just because you may be entitled to do it doesn't mean that you should. I would advocate for children like libertarians or others who say, okay, it's just a drug, it's just marijuana. If I were giving a commencement speech, I'd say, hey, guys, it may be an individual choice, it may be individual liberty, but it's against the law and you're going to ruin your life, bad things that happen from it. That's with a drug. With a gun, the only issue would come into if it were ever used. I am against zero tolerance rules. So just like the child who has a fishing knife or a gun in the trunk because he was using it over the weekend and he's facing discipline or suspension or being kicked out of school because of it, I don't think that we should take an approach with a teacher to say, zero tolerance is appropriate and you're going to be fired. I don't think that any of our teachers in Cherokee County would take a gun into school because they think they should when the other circumstances are in place that say they shouldn't. However, I don't think it's a firing offense. I think it's just like any issue with a student, zero tolerance is inappropriate and should be approached on a case-by-case basis if they did that.
What is the average class size in Cherokee County?
Depends upon what grade you're talking about. So I'm not going to give twelve different answers.
Okay, as a school board member, who would you seek advice from?
There is another candidate who I will, since he is not running for school board, I won't mention him. There's another candidate running for school board who I will not mention as a Republican because I don't want to choose sides yet in her race. But I respect Mr. Barge and he and I had a good conversation back in 2010 about school choice, vocational schools, technical schools, and some of the changes that, I guess they're frustrations for him that have motivated his political decision to run. I would also seek input on the local level from parents. I think that experienced teachers and parents provide insight that, I mean, heck, I have insight as a lawyer. They don't know what's going on in the law in the courtroom all the time. I can't say I know what every parent and every teacher is going through. So I will seek their input. But if you get down to an individual's name, there's two that I can think of, and one I won't name right now.
Question eleven is, how is teacher performance measured? And finally, to that question twelve is, how do you think it should be measured?
Oh lordy. Some people might test or rank teacher performance by pay. A spouse might think her husband or his wife is successful based upon pay, based upon that. I think it's difficult to say the achievement of the students because it's rather random which students that they get. I think that we are approaching a good measure, excuse me, a good compromise between student performance, teacher responsibility, and balancing that with some test scores, both from the teacher's level and from the student's level. To just say that we can go and get a master's degree from an online university or a doctorate from an online university and thus my pay is going to be doubled is perhaps not the path we want to go down.
What are some of the challenges facing our district now?
I think trust, public perception of trust or a public perception of a lack of trust is the biggest one. I, one thing we don't have is a problem with student achievement. We do have a problem with student graduation. And mostly, those are not the same students. The students who are not graduating, who are not being tested, and who are not scoring at all on the achievement level or might be pulling it down even below the high levels they're at now are someone we should target. I believe that parental involvement at the younger grades is very important and we need to find a way to get parents involved in the first few grades so that the values and character put in the student or achieved by the student then carry over to high school or middle school.
What are we doing to improve graduation rates? And along the same vein, what are your ideas to improve student performance?
I disagree with the premise of the question. Student performance is an individual measure. It's important to some kids and it's not important to others. With regard to, what am I doing to improve graduation rates? I'm running for school board and hoping that somehow I can make a difference. What I would do to improve graduation rates would be to give or help create, in conjunction with the state legislature and hopefully other educators, a fourth track for graduation so that kids who are sophomores, juniors, and seniors have a path to graduation that they think is relevant to their lives. Right now, we have three paths for completion of high school. One is a certificate, which is, you didn't graduate, you didn't get a diploma, but you went all the time and jumped through the hoops. The other one is a special education diploma and the other one is a high school diploma. I believe we should have a fourth one for vocational or technical education diploma so that sophomores, juniors, and seniors who are not considering that they want to go to college can stay in high school, receive a certificate for something that interests and excites them, and which ultimately, when they're 22, 23, or 25, still enables them to go to college at that point.
What are some of your ideas to help aid teachers?
I would love to work with the local business community and large retailers to be able to find a matching gift card program or community-based program where, for example, not to say this is a great amount, either too much or too less, but if we could give every classroom teacher a hundred dollar gift card at Target and find a way to do that, ultimately, I'm sure that a competitor of Target would like to be the one involved. So we can probably start from there and get something, perhaps a little bit more bang for the buck that doesn't cost a dollar per dollar. Then to have those programs from those retailers go in. If we can work with the business community to return things directly to classroom teachers, I think that would be great. I think that our teachers suffer from esprit de corps, or poorer esprit de corps. They have been largely reduced. I would be angry if my employer, like even Obamacare gives us a choice for insurance coverage and last year, the state of Georgia took away that choice from teachers and other state employees and said, you're just going to use this group. And I can understand their anger. I think that without a checks and balances and a unifying opponent, perhaps Republicans have gone a tad over the line in some directions that we should reevaluate. Whether it's just with the cost of insurance is one thing, but to say that we're not going to give anybody a choice is a whole nother thing.
I'm going to step out of line here somewhat because legislation was, not legislation of concern, was passed today and affirmed that the teacher's health care plan would be changed as of the first of the year, this coming year.
It was approved yesterday, yeah.
But the question itself that we have had and have asked other candidates is, what are your plans to help address teacher concerns such as health care plan changes with the local legislative delegation?
I, depending upon who wins, I know our local legislative delegation on a first-name basis. I have shared my views on the past choices with health care. So I'll just talk with them openly, but I'm not sure that we need to accept the premise that the state is responsible for our teachers' health care. Perhaps another competitor may be willing to work with local districts and school boards at a more effective cost. So perhaps the communication with our legislative delegation ought to be to enable school boards some choice too.
What are your ideas to help improve communication with parents?
Well, right now, for my campaign, any parent or anybody can call my campaign and if I don't answer, it leaves a voicemail that gets texted and emailed and maybe a day later we'll look and read it and we'll call them back. I think that there is something to be said for lines of communication. If every parent can call up every school board member and lodge a complaint or a, an accolade, eventually we'll all have too much information to get anything done in our lives. So open communication is a two-way street that has both benefits and disadvantages. I think that simple communication perhaps is the key. We do a lot of communicating by email in Cherokee County. When they're on the school portal, they can email me or concerns, whatever, but they do have a line of communication, both in school, contact the teacher, then contact this person, then contact this person. But to be able to contact by email, telephone, or even a public Facebook post, say, hey, this is what I think, can you get back to me? However, we all are perhaps aware that Facebook with posting privileges for public can be abused by the 5 percent who may agree or disagree vehemently to a position. And we've seen these chains go on and on, back and forth between people that makes communication unhealthy. I would like to just keep it simple, but to make sure that I do listen, that I do communicate, and that when appropriate, I do advocate.
What can be done to ensure teachers be better compensated?
There's a simple answer, but it's not necessarily the right one. That's to just give them more money. But I'm not sure that compensation is only limited to money. I think that teachers and the pride in their, what they do, the desire to do it, is largely what motivates them to get in the first place and that it's so hard or they are underappreciated for what they do is why they leave. For example, if teachers were paid hourly, that might be changing a lot of school budgets for a lot of teachers in a lot of places. I think that the simple answer is not the best one. To improve their compensation, we can raise their benefits, we can do this, do that, and the other. We can raise taxes. Eventually, no one moves here, the number of kids in the school diminishes, teachers lose their jobs. There's reasons that balancing competing interests is called balancing competing interests and to just give more money to teachers might have a consequence you have to be aware of. But the simple answer is to give them more money or to increase their compensation. The better answer might be to consider alternatives so that they like what they're doing and they want to stay. And if that means just money, that's one thing, but I bet there's more than just money too.
In what ways has the Federal Reserve policy affected school budgeting?
Well, right now, I guess some people would say it's really great to get low interest rates and to tie them up for 30 years. If that's a result of Federal Reserve policy, then that's a result of Federal Reserve policy. But what might be taken advantage of one year may be a problem the next year. I'm not going to comment on even the advisability of having the Federal Reserve or its policy at play. The question I speak, I think, might lean towards addressing that issue, but right now, the Federal Reserve is in place. It sets policies. Right now, somebody's able to take advantage of low interest rates because of those policies. And I guess that would be the simplest answer is because of its policies, we're spending less on the money we borrow. Whether we should be borrowing it or not is another question.
What is Article 8 of the Georgia Constitution?
I don't have it memorized. If you tell me, I'll discuss it. Is that the one with education? I mean, I can get into that, but I have so many statutes and everything, that's why I have the books.
Could you describe the geographic boundaries of your district?
Yes. If you start at the corner of Univetter Road and Highway 140, actually go to the western side of the tire station there in the little road because there's a nub that doesn't have anybody living on it, but it's a nub that includes the tire store. Go down 140. On your right is my district, on the left is not my district. When you get to Hickory Road, turn left and go down Batesville Road until you hit Fulton County. On your right is my district, on the left is not my district. Then go all the way down on the right till you hit Cobb County, along the varying border of Roswell and Fulton County to hit Cobb County. Then go west before you get to Jamerson Road, excuse me, not Jamerson Road, the corner of 92 and, forget the road. Anyway, before you get to the Kroger and the Walmart on 92 and somewhere around the south side of 92 at the Woodlands, you'll go up from the Cobb County line to Highway 92 and then proceed west. Then you're going to get to Nice Road where the First Baptist Church of Woodstock is. You're going to turn right. You're going to go up Nice Road to Arnold Mill Road and then you're going to kind of go catty corner across some unmarked roads or nonexistent property lines till you get to East Cherokee. Then you're going to go up East Cherokee and do the same thing over to, through, just south of Bradshaw Farms, over towards Hickory Road and then back towards the intersection on Hickory Road, the intersection of that and New Light Road, turn right up New Light Road, and continue until you hit Univetter. When you're at Univetter, you're, to the right is my district, to the left is not my district, and then go up Univetter until you get to your point of beginning.
What is your opinion of the Common Core State Standards Initiative?
Well, that implies that it's a state standard initiative anymore. My opinion is that... My opinion is that good intentions is being influenced by the money. And Common Core standards are good intentions. If they were just standards, I don't think people would have a problem with it, but people have said, "Let's impose these standards and take this money from us." And when you do that, you have to do this, that, and the other thing too. So, although there are great things about parts of Common Core, there are parts that may not be advisable. And if you want to take all of Common Core and you have a choice between all or nothing, it's like saying, "I can give you all the water in this and all the water that's on the roof here." A little bit of something can be very healthy. A lot of it can be dangerous. So, you can't say, "I want it all," when it might be advisable to take less than that. So, Common Core, if it's an all or nothing proposition, I'm against that. However, on the school board, we don't get that choice. We just get to work with what the state legislature says. However, we can influence the legislature to say, "We take Common Core money. We take this, that, and the other thing." But if a school district doesn't do what it's supposed to with the Common Core curriculum, for example, by golly, they have to pay a dollar a day as punishment. It's still technically illegal to ignore the curriculum, but it might not be the wrong thing to do. There's ways to address things, but if you're talking about Common Core as an all or nothing proposition, there's enough there to say, "Thanks, but no thanks."
Do you have any relatives who work for the school district? And if so, would you recuse yourself from voting for a budget and other matters?
No, I don't.
Have you ever had any license revoked or not renewed for calls or been the subject of professional discipline or cited for breach of ethics or unprofessional conduct by any bar association, disciplinary committee, court, administrative agency, or other professional group? Or have you been expelled from any organization? So, please explain.
No.
Have you or has any organization or business under your control ever declared bankruptcy or been sued or currently facing needs or other financial issues?
In 2002, I declared bankruptcy. I was August 21st of 2001. On the day before, I went to the ER. The next day, I was disabled. And I went to work or got to the office and told everybody what was going on. And I made the decision not to lay anybody off. And that was a tough decision. And nine months later, I learned or got to the point of realizing it was the wrong decision. So, in, now it was August 21st of 2000. I returned to my office full-time after surgery and recovery in April of 2000. And one, built my practice back up with a six-figure, well, I, and six fingers, figure, well, a swing of six figures from one direction to six figures in the other direction. And was surviving reconstruction of my practice. And 9/11 hit and changed the economics of a lot of things at the time. And ultimately, in 2002, I was not able to go on. So, I was, 2002, I had to file a chapter seven.
Have you ever been arrested for or convicted of any crime excluding murder, trafficking offenses?
No.
Could you please describe one instance in which you faced an ethical dilemma and how you resolved it?
Hmm, only one, huh? Trying to think about facing an ethical dilemma and trying to take it outside of the legal context. I just talked a little bit about it with the bankruptcy. The easy thing to do was to fire everybody and to cut my losses and protect what I had. And my big mistake financially was not to, was, my mistake financially was to not fire everybody, cut my losses, and go there. And I put my finances at risk by doing what I thought was right for other people. And I still can't say I wouldn't do the same thing, but I have an appreciation for some of the paths in life where we're not intending to go and we end up at the same time. I think that one of my ethical dilemmas had to deal with a friend who had a mental health problem and going to his apartment with the assistance of the police because he wasn't answering his calls. And I didn't know if he was alive or safe or anything there. And getting the police to do a welfare check. And then deciding after that whether to help him and give him opportunity because I believe in the general goodness of people or to just not worry about it because it was the easy thing to do. And I helped him. I gave him opportunities. Ultimately, he may or may not have been able to beat his demons, but I have no regrets in trying.
Are you currently connected to any outstanding unpaid taxes in any way?
It's April 15th. I think I might owe something to the state of Georgia. No, this year, we got a refund. But I do owe 941 taxes at this time, so there you go.
Is there anything else we should know that has not been addressed? This is basically your time to address the voters and say what you'd like.
It's easy to say, "I'm doing this for the kids" because we all, we aspire to have kids and help kids. And like my friend, I wanted to help him. And it's easy to say yes. The hard part in life is to say no. But when it comes to making choices, to say that there's a difference between a need and a want, to say that there is a cost-benefit analysis thing to make on any choice. It's not just to do what feels good. And then, when I make a vote on the board, I might not be on the winning side. I might be on the winning side. But the decision of the board is the decision of the board. Although I may have an opinion different, I should express that in a way that hopefully advocates my position to maybe change the position of the board. And these types of values and issues are some of the things to say, "I'm always going to do something or always going to do something else." I'm reminded of the little thing I learned in law. Never say always and never say never. But I will evaluate and make decisions based on values and experience. Also, you ought to know what the values are. I've been a Republican since at least 1984. Been an active Republican since 1994. I have taken positions publicly to stand for what I believe. And they have not always been easy positions. At the same time, as a lawyer, sometimes I have to take positions to advocate for someone's, someone else's interest. That may be different from what I believe. I share a story with you along those lines. Lawyers often get asked the question, "How do you represent somebody you know is guilty?" And last year, I, after 27 years of practice, I got a new answer for that. Because I was representing a man who, the evidence said, was guilty. And the crime that he was charged with was that he had walked up to a sleeping man, a man sleeping on his own porch. He shot that man in the head. And on top of that, my client admitted that he had done that. So, how do I represent somebody? Well, lawyers can always wrap up, "Oh, we are doing it because the Constitution requires it. My client has an interest," and things like that. But that experience was more than just representing somebody who I had done something and I knew had done it because he actually admitted it. But there was more to that man than just a criminal. He was a human being. And he was a Christian. When I came across his case, he was looking at life without parole. And there's not a whole lot I can do to change the facts. But I know that life without parole is something that takes away hope. And when I talked to that man about forgiveness, the Christian concept of grace, forgiveness, and redemption, and I asked him, "When was the last time he went to church?" And he said, "13." And he was now 20. But he broke down and cried because he remembered going to his mother's church and about Christ and seeking forgiveness of sins. And together, he and I worked his own human version of seeking forgiveness of his sins. Where that by admitting his sins and asking forgiveness, there is his interpersonal spirituality between him and God. And there is what we have here on earth. All we can ask for is to do what God asks for, is to confess your sins and seek forgiveness. And he did. And because of that, he doesn't have a life without parole sentence and he is in prison with hope to get out. So, he can redeem himself with humans as well as with his God. And so, it's not just always about law and the Constitution. Sometimes, it's about what's right. So, I got into that story because lawyers talk a lot about what law and this, that, and the other. But the bottom line is to understand that I will do what's right, even if it's a hard thing to do. And if I can't get, excuse me, even if it's a hard thing to do and when I believe enough in it, I will get someone else to agree with me and believe in it. And maybe as we go piece by piece to the members of the school board and community or the state legislature or what, we might change the system. We might change a law. We might change a life. But doing what is right is simply, sometimes, all that you can do. So, that's what I want people to know.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be with us today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Take care. Thank you for listening.